This conference will now be recorded.
You've seen the house at first, 7:59.
Something bad's over just in case.
Oh, I should have just stayed standing.
All right, we'll call a meeting order when everyone joins me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Prior to getting going here, I would like us to keep our thoughts and prayers with Commissioner Sleep. He's again in the hospital and just keep him in our prayers and thoughts. We'll be healed quickly. With that, first order will be to approve the agenda.
No changes. Mr. Chairman, I would note that there is discussion about fire ban.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Sorry.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for approval. Those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Do we have any conflicts? Seeing none. Next item will be to canvass the general election results and random selection of precincts and contests for post-election audit pursuant to South Dakota codified law 12-17B-20.
Okay.
Thank you.
All righty, so I will start reading the results. I will read the results that were printed off a tabulator, and you have in front of you the results that were entered into total vote and also reported on election night reporting system at the Secretary of State's office. Also, keep in mind that we did have one provisional ballot that was counted this morning. According to statute, it had to be started at seven, so three people come in this morning and counted that. You also have that copy of that as well. So when we get to precinct number one, the election night reporting that was reported on election night will be one vote more from the ballot that was cast this morning. So we'll start with the absentee precinct, and this will be for presidential electors. So Harris, 3346, Oliver, 56, Trump, 5568, Kennedy, 126. Harris, 271, Oliver, 11, Trump, 487, Kennedy, 35. Okay. Precinct two, Harris, 264, Oliver, 14, Trump, 570, Kennedy, 26. And just to keep it rolling a little quicker, are you okay with me just reading instead of saying the name, or would you rather me say the name?
Just read it.
Okay.
We'll let you know if we lose track.
Okay, all right, sounds good. This is precinct three, 280, 5663, 31. Precinct four, 244, 10, 428, 24. Precinct five, 782, 1279. Precinct six, 380, 1284. Precinct seven, 101, 6281, 10. Precinct eight, 252, 132, 2. Precinct nine, 109, 3481, and 19. Precinct.
581.
Say that again.
Trump on.
581, I apologize, and then 19. Thank you. I make things up sometimes out of nowhere. So three, and this is precinct 10, 318, 12939, 24. Okay, so that concludes the presidential electors race. We'll move on to United States representative, and it's Cheryl Johnson and Dusty Johnson, starting with absentee, 2831, 6059. One, 229, 551. Two, 233, 625. Three, 222, 731. Four, 226, 470. Five, 571, 61. Six, 351, 34. Seven, 71314. Eight, 27 and 129. Nine, 101, 588. And precinct 10, 256, 995. That concludes U.S. Representative. On to Public Utilities Commissioner. All right, and it's Wilson Oaks-Fegan. 2643, 468, 5445. One, it is 198, 67459. 196, 77529. 205, 67632. 194, 75384. 3016117. 6735270. 2018112.
527.
Yes, that is what it says, 527. Sorry. Precinct 10, 233, 92869. That concludes Public Utilities Commissioner. Okay, state senator, district 31, Randy Dybert. 5842, 533. 597. 690. 469. 146. 121. 293. 121. 532. And 950. State senator, district 31, state representative, district 31, Odenbach Fitzgerald Greenlee McVickers. 5262, 4589, 2508, 1883. 427, 373, 228, 164. 504, 400, 227, 161. 614, 496, 240, 159. 361, 350, 199, 161. 127, 106, 6154. 120, 98, 29, 24. 260, 220, 7966. 100, 94, 3126. 468, 371, 125, 111. 857, 671, 259, 240. That concludes state representative 31. Supreme Court Justice retention, yes, no? 5691, 1511. 505, 135. 530, 178. 625, 163. 419, 172. 135, 42. 109, 33. 289, 52. 91 and 36. 482, 96. 837, 214. Includes retention. Constitutional Amendment E, yes, no? 5089, 4089, thank you, and 4886. Okay. 358, 439. 467, 364, 502. 385, 487.
587.
587. Sorry, you guys. 298, 405. 92, 130. 48, 121. 139, 256. 34, 124. 197, 506. 441, 834. And that includes E. On to F, Constitutional Amendment F, yes, no? 5291, 3665. 460, 336. 513, 361. 618, 350. 386, 314. 113, 103. 8680, 241, 148. 93 and 61. 471, 230. 823, 443. So Constitutional Amendment G, yes, no? 4367. And 4615. 392, 413. 437, 442. 403, 572. 367, 342. 123, 98. 63, 106. 161. 235. 55, 105. 219. 487. 5513, 772. Okay, on to Constitutional Amendment H. Yes, no? 3351, 5401. 279, 479. 342, 500. 326, 618. 291, 398. 105, 108. 57111. 129, 253. 30125. 183, 499. 389, 864. Initiated measure 28, yes, no? 3162, 5737. 266, 522. 331, 533. 285, 681. 246, 457. 89, 126. 63, 106. 1116, 273. 39, 117. 183, 499. What's that?
188.
188, 510. Sorry, I messed one up one. Okay. And 327, 942. All right. Initiated measure 29. 4194, 4829. 417, 390. 497, 382. 433, 553. 440, 278. 138, 83. 65, 104. 172, 227. 59, 101. 290, 422. And 510, 485.
785.
785, that's what it says.
All right, numbers really.
Yeah, sorry, yeah. All right. All right. Okay, last, referred law 21. Yes, no? 3894, 4668. 338, 418. 385, 443. 379, 549. 296, 385. 101, 114. 58, 107. 159, 221. 38, 116. 173, 517. 425, 800. Chairman, that concludes the canvas of the general election held on November 5, 2020.
More motion to accept?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for, to accept the canvassing of the votes. Those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
I have three copies of, if you could please sign those for me, please. And then I will just notate absent for Commissioner Sleep and Flanigan on there as well. Thank you.
Mr. Thompson?
Kind of do the post-election.
In light of the.
First minute.
Got to do the post-election audit stuff now.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Unless you want to do that, and then we come back?
No, let's finish this. I'm sorry. Apologize.
Yeah. And a long year almost took me down. Okay, so the next process is the post-election audit. So pursuant to 1217B-20, we must conduct a post-election audit. So the first order of business will to do, will be to do a random drawing from the precincts. All of the precincts did have 100 ballots cast in each precinct. So whichever precinct we draw, we'll be able to audit. So I have Spearfish 1. 2, 3. Lead, Deadwood, Nemo, Row 1, San Ang, Whitewood, and Row Number 2.
Should I just take it out and let that gentleman in the audience draw one?
Sounds good.
Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Glad you came, right? In the spotlight. Easy for mixing them up, did. Can't get hands on one, that's too bad. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, Brenda, I'll let you read it.
It'll be Whitewood.
There is a order.
Okay. And Whitewood had 723 ballots cast.
Supposed to be hand audited, right?
Yep, yep, okay. So then the next order of business will be, bump those out, will be to, we have to do one state ride race. So that's all of the races except for district 31, senate and representative. So presidential electors, U.S. State Representative, Public Utilities Commissioners, Supreme Court Justice Retention, Constitutional Amendment E, F, G, H, initiated measure 28, 29, and referred law 21. Race will be Constitutional Amendment F. Okay, so we will not put Constitutional Amendment F back in, and then I will add state, our state senate district 31 and state representative 31 for the other race that we will manually count. Thank you, Ray. Constitutional Amendment G. Okay, and then just information, the post-election audit is scheduled for November 14, starting at 8:00 p.m., or 8:00 a.m., and we will start with the instructions, and then after that, we will manually count those two races.
In this room.
In this room here, yes. That concludes that. I will get this wrote out, and then you and I have to sign it, but if you want to move on to Paul, that'll be fine.
Paul, you want to come up? Join us at the table and visit about the fire ban that we have in place?
Well, the U.S. Forest Service listed their stage two fire restrictions on November 1, and then light up that, and the weather conditions, we got some moisture. I'd suggest that the county commissioner lift our burn ban countywide and go back to following the ordinance that Bob signed in 2012. And Ray is here from South Dakota Wildland Fire Service. I think he concurs.
Yep.
Okay. So, and further information, we met online with county commissioner, or county EMs, fire coordinators, National Weather Service, Cody and Ray, and U.S. Forest Service, Jason. One of the things he'd like to do going forward is to kind of meet over the winter and try to get everybody on the same stage so that when they go in, we go in.
Sounds good.
And I've actually went over our fire ordinance, and I give it to Bruce and rewrote it. I think there's some value to looking at that again since 2012, kind of match up with the Forest Service is doing.
I agree.
And one of the things you need to think about in the county commission that you think about is, like last time, I included a penalty, which is allowed by state law. So whether you do that or not, when we bring it forward, you can think about that.
That's it.
I move to, do we want to lift the fire ban, or do you want to rescind the previous motion?
Say lifted.
Yeah. I'll move to lift the fire ban.
Yeah, I would second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to lift the fire ban that we have in place due to the fact we have a little moisture on hand. I think everyone still needs to be mindful that it is still dry out there. All those who favor the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming today. Has two jobs.
Yeah. We couldn't have done that without you, buddy.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Items from the public, is there anyone in the body of the audience, the public, that would like to online or in person, that would like to address the board at this time? time? Seeing none, we'll close that. Items from commissioners.
Just like to commend the Audit Department and the whole election crew for doing a fine job.
Oh, absolutely.
The issues that we saw around the state, we can feel very good about the team that we have here in North Carolina.
Thank you all very much for your support. It went very well.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think we'd be fair to recognize Greg Diaz and his crew, too, for the work that they did on the PSAT move as well, work in conjunction with the Sheriff's Office, a lot of work. I think they're still trying to work some details out, but a tremendous amount of effort was involved in that, and there we have us.
Sounds like it's up to running well.
Things are going very smoothly. For all intents and purposes, it's been a smooth transition, you know. There's heartache before getting things up and running, and like Bruce said, there's a lot of tweaking, things to get adjusted, a lot of communications, adjustments.
A lot of pieces to the puzzle.
There are a lot, you know, and there's a lot more to come, but thank you.
More than us late people can comprehend.
Yes, exactly.
Plus, the website looks very good.
Yeah, it does.
Little learning curve, but I'll get it.
Good to hear. It's good feedback. Thank you.
We're just going to point out that the commission, next commission meeting is Tuesday, and we'll be meeting over at the city of Deadwood. And so the doors won't open there till about 7:30. So we're going to try to hustle and get everything set up and be ready to go by 8. Greg and I and Amber are going to go over and practice here at 9:00, so.
Are you over there because there's a lot of people coming for Bob's birthday?
Bob's having a birthday?
No, it's our hearing.
Was it on Tuesday?
It is. It's the 12th.
Okay, with that said, I would interfere the motion to adjourn.
8:24.